Chief Manby, my name is John in the morning reading December 10th. I'm going for the water. Um, tonight we have regular members, John Wells, Dave Burchard, um, oh, me. And, uh, we're missing a hole, so I can assign. Actually, both of you guys are, are in tonight. But neither of them were here last meeting.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Um, so first item on the agenda is public comments of any non-agenda items. Anybody from the commission or the public have anything they would like to voice out? Discuss, point about congratulate us all, compliment us all? Okay, moving on then.
Bam.
Uh, can I get a motion to accept the July 9 minutes? Uh, anybody have any issues with it? You've already, if it's too many, uh, all favor except for minutes?
I, I.
Repose?
I'm gonna abstain. I was not in attendance.
Um, communications, you have anything on the enforcement report?
Could, uh, Mark give us an enforcement report?
No, we really don't have anything going on, so.
On the report, uh, who's Crog now?
Austin.
Austin, okay. But, but I move right along. Um, so we do have two other, we have a letter from Dan Velkowsky. Unfortunately, he has to retire due to medical issues. And, uh, this Coleman, Coleman thing, I think I had this last time, right? Sort of last, meaning it's a mission. This was the battery guys.
So.
Uh, that was just a certified letter to you guys.
Yeah, it was just FYI, it came in. We don't have to do anything with it.
That's all I got for communications then. Um, we don't have any old business on the agenda, so.
I'm sorry, Tom, if I might, I just want to, um, I just want to publicly thank Dan for, uh, for his service on the commission. Dan came on in 2004, if I'm not mistaken.
Wow.
And served, um, not just serving Punning and Zoning Commission, but it was also, as most of us know, he was also one of the Slackmen during the same time. So he was a total glutton for punishment. Um, Dan served as a chair of the Punning and Zoning for at least one, maybe two years, that I recall. Um, Dan Velkowsky of all the commission members that I've served with is ranks right up there in the elite. Open-minded, fair, um, you know, and certainly no hidden anything. I mean, Dan Velkowsky said what he thought, voted in what he thought was the best interest of our community. And, uh, town of East Graham, we've been lucky to have Dan Velkowsky serve the community.
Dan, if you're watching. First thing on the new business agenda is an informal presentation by Indus, a request for consideration of possible zone change to Commerce Transitional Zone, bonded profit group of 24.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission of David Ziyaks, special manager there with Hepburn Hospital Associates, located strictly right across the street. And, uh, the, uh, right here this evening, I'm representing Indus, who I've worked with for many, many years, uh, around the area. And this is their piece of land, um, maybe could you put up that, um, media like that? Um, this is their, the piece of land that they have, just right on the town line with Windsor, where International Drive changes to Seymour. And, uh, it's 37.66 acres. Uh, they still farm it, um, various, uh, I think it was vegetables lately. Uh, 36.77 acres of land that has been zoned R30 for a long time. All of the land to the north is actually up on this plan, even though I always get confused with that, where all the twists and turns and Seymour and International is what's north and what's east. This plan is pretty much north to the, uh, to the top of the page. So everything easterly up here in the, uh, is in the town of Windsor, it's all zoned industrial. And actually, Indus has a, uh, a major project that was approved a number of years ago on the land abutting this, 248,000 square feet of, uh, warehouse space and basically, uh, on 110 truck loading, located on the faces there. And that's been available for a number of years, and they have not been able to get a tenant, uh, for that building. Um, this parcel they've looked at for many years for, you know, what's the appropriate use on this, on this parcel, zoned R30. Part of the problem with this is that, um, the, uh, public utilities, the water, the sewer, and even electric is located a couple of thousand feet at least to the east in Windsor, sort of up where the dollar, uh, warehouse is. And, um, when the property to the east of this gets developed, those utilities will be brought down to that location, but that's still about 1500 feet from this parcel. So you have to deal with the expense of bringing those utilities down here. Uh, we were looking at the use on this property a couple of years ago, and I was amazed at how little electrical service is done in this area here. It required quite a major upgrade by ever-source, provide power or anything of any size here. Um, again, the, the land to the east of this is all zoned industrial. So talking with Robin back one or two ago in the summertime, we were just kicking around some ideas of what zone might be appropriate here other than the R30, because there's really no interest in the R30 zone, all single-family homes. Um, so we're looking at the transition zone. By definition, that's, that's the zone that you guys created for such a transition, because we have all industrial land abutting us to the east, and then we have multifamily and some single family directly across the street that's still in the A-zone. But, uh, pretty much everything to the right, it is to the west of this, is apartments and condominiums. And then town to the, uh, south, there's, uh, single-family residents, uh, called a SAC, located there as well. Uh, one of the things, uh, in bringing the transition zone versus the straight commerce zones, is you, it brings in the opportunity for mixed use. And that's really what Indus is focusing on right now, is trying to either team up or sell this property to a mixed-use type of a development. Um, the days of the, I know a lot of people are concerned about warehouses and doing that, but that trend is really starting to wane quite a bit right now in our area. Uh, there's, there is sort of a, I don't know, which you want to call it a ton and cheap joke or whatever floating around, that everybody who needed a 250,000 square foot building got one. So, uh, that market is kind of dried up right now. There's a number, actually, Indus has a number of buildings approved in Windsor, uh, that have been sitting down for a few years.
What kind of buildings are those?
Uh, we're a large warehouse, we have 250, about 250 we'll call them. I actually have done them all, so I know what to do, but, uh, there's been very little interest. Um, there's a building over that we did over on Hazelwood, uh, we're, uh, just, just behind, you know, um, right, again, right at the town line, that site is in Windsor, that, that was not for Indus, it's for another developer, it's about 220,000 square feet, and they're having trouble finding a tenant for that building. So really, what Indus is focusing on now is what, what kind of a mixed use can be put on this property? And in order to do that, we need the transition zone to do that. What's interesting about it, when you, when you look at your transition zone, uh, this falls under the category that pretty much anything that goes on this property is going to be a special permit, because you have a 200-foot zone of special review, whenever you assign to residential property.
That's the red plus bubble log around it.
Yeah, that's gonna, and then, and then, uh, no, that, the red that, the, the, the sort of pinkish color is the parcel itself, and then there's a 500-foot line around for zone change purposes, we have to identify all the properties. So inside our property is where the 200-foot zone would be, so it's, it's virtually the entire parcel is, that for the east behalf is, within that 200-foot zone. And, uh, so it's a special permit, no matter how you, no matter how you shake it out, it would be a special permit, uh, review. And then, what's interesting is just to the west of this, there is a fairly heavy wooded area of about 250 to 300 feet that is owned by the condominium next door. It's not owned by Indus, so that natural buffer, this parcel exists there now. Uh, but again, you know, any, any kind of use on this site would, would fall into the special permit, let it, you know. So that's what the thinking is, we thought we'd come in like we always do and talk informally with you guys, see what you think before we come right in here and pick up.
When they say mixed use, are you thinking that they would put in like, uh, some kind of a L-shaped building or something that puts some parking, and then there would be stores and shops underneath and apartments above?
I don't, no, I don't see any retail use here myself, you know.
Then what do you?
I think it's more gonna be like, maybe you can take the opportunity to do some, some multi-family, uh, uh, some flex space, office space, research space. What's, what they're finding out now is that, uh, the sort of 50 to 100,000 square foot modern building is, is popular right now. Companies that don't need big, huge, um, suburban office buildings, like, we did a bunch of over Windsor, we all know about those, they're all in the three, four, 500,000 square foot suburban office buildings. Um, those are all gonna get repurposed for something. There, there just aren't any users for that site. There are a whole bunch of Haitians in some ways, maybe, maybe some kind of, I was, we're looking at, uh, some, we have some projects in our office right now, we're, we're in that 50, 75,000 square foot number, and it seems like very popular right now. Corporations eat buildings like that, um, or reduce staff and things of that nature. A lot of people are working two or three days a week, whatever. Um, they also need computer space for servers and things of that nature. Um, so that's, you know, my conversations with Indus folks, that's, but they're kind of like leaning towards to find a developer who specializes in these kind of mixed use. We did add a couple of interesting uses, a couple of months ago, if you remember, we have the outdoors, uh, or the indoor recreational uses, we have some self-storage possibilities. Uh, those are now in the transition zone. This is not on a state highway, so they, this property would be, uh, available for those users.
Your brewery's real hot, they're down.
I think.
That was tummy ache.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's, well, I hate to say it, but we all kind of knew this sooner or later, there was gonna be a, you know, fight on that. Uh, but yeah, but that's where we are. The days of, you know, I mean, your, your audience would allow up to a 400,000 square foot warehouse, but, you know, I cannot say, I can't stand here and say to you that that would never happen, because it's, it's an available use, but this just is, this, this site is just not for that. It's too far away from 20, and there's plenty of other places they can go right now, there's plenty of other opportunities, I can't imagine why they would come to a relatively expensive site, because it's gonna cost a lot of money to bring the utilities down here.
Speaking in terms of multifamily, I know they're saying homeownership is on a, on a downward trend, rather than an apartment, rentable apartment building, what are you seeing in the mercury now as far as condominiums?
Actually, we're starting to see a little rebirth of condos, um, but a lot of rental houses, like we're building in town here right now, those are extremely popular, you know, um, the, the guys that are building the one here in town, they have a sister project over in, uh, in, uh, in Granby and, and in Groomfield. And I was just at the Groomfield site today, they just started renting those, and, um, they put up 12 units for rent, and they had eight occupied, right? Like literally, it's, since the last time I was there, it's, it's unbelievable. And, uh, Granby is full, Granby is full, it's, it looks, it feels almost exactly like the one here in town, it's being filled, it's all, it's very popular. This, they already have a lot of people very interested, sort of, you know, informally, they can't take formal registration yet, but right for the ones here in town. So the rental housing is still big in, in our area and through what I'm seeing in Connecticut.
Well, what do they see in for an average, um, of rent in Granby?
They're three, four thousand dollars, three, four thousand bucks, and people are doing it, because, you know, I think what you're seeing is a lot of, a lot of people, uh, they don't, there, a lot of people are, are fully committed to, you know, laying out hundreds of thousands of dollars for the down payment on a house, have all the maintenance responsibilities, um, and that kind of things. There's, there's a lifestyle change, you know, whether it's people my age or younger people, uh, they, they like the, the ability to live in a house, pay their rent, that's what it costs, but have very little responsibility beyond that, and they can get up and go if they have to, their job.
Seems like the trend is young professionals or empty nesters.
You know, it's a big mix, it's a big mix. There's still people who like, you know, a house, they don't want a two-bedroom, third-floor apartment. Um, so you have a lot of folks doing that, and, um, here, yeah, I mean, I can see with 30-something acres with no wetlands, you still have to have appropriate buffers all the way around, uh, you know, you're looking at, maybe you can get a nice mix, uh, of residential here and some of that flex office space, um, you know, corporation kind of stuff, 50, 60, 70,000 square foot. But that's, all the buildings on Day Hill Road that are that size are being repurposed right now with new tenants, machine shops, they just did two of them, complete renovations, uh, for really super high-tech, uh, companies that have to service Pratt Whitney, you know, have to service these companies with all the high-tech machinery, uh, machines and everything, so they're looking at buildings that are 30, 40, 50,000 square feet where they can show, they can have a showroom for their machines, they can do testing, they can do.
So you say repurposed, but what, they, you went in and just inside separated them apart?
They gutted the buildings completely and redid them for completely different use, and then the, uh, a lot of the parking lots are being upgraded because they're 30, 35 years old. Um, usually they have like one or two warning docks, because they have to bring these big machines in, you know, once in a while, a couple times a week. But yeah, there's been a couple of those that we've done on, on Day Hill Road, and seeing that trend. Um, so there's a lot of activity around, and it's a lot of mixed bag, but big boxes right now require, that's all I, that's all I know. So, uh, you know, there's no chance of turning that into single-family homes? There's just no market for that.
And you wanna, you, you're gonna have a chance to ask?
Yeah, no, they're not, it's an informal discussion, there's no public comment, yeah, it's an informal.
Believe me, I, you know, industry and what Indus is, if there was a buyer out there who wanted to buy a street 30, R30 zone, that would, it'd be gone, it'd be long gone. But, um, that's a tough business today, to build, um, 600,000 dollar houses and sell them, that's a tough business. And particularly this site, you've got to break down the utilities, you have to bring the water and sewer down, but we, we know about the long-term problems that the apartments and the condos face time to time with their onsite systems, those are, those are trouble for, in the long run, those are problematic, expensive to maintain. These, uh, any kind of sizable development, that 30-something acre, it's gotta have water and sewer, and the electric will have to be, somebody's gonna have to pay ever-source black money to bring the electrical service down here, that really drops off by the time you get down here. So that's where they are, you know, and, and you'd be happy to hear anything you have to say, I'll bring it back to them, we'll see.
Tried to go forward a little bit about, you know, what they want to do.
I have a question, what would the buffer zone be for the, the homes on Pond Lane?
Um, Robert, what's the, what's the setback on that, is it 50, 60 feet, is that all?
For which zone, I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah, for like the southern folks, in the residential subdivision.
If it was going to go to Commerce Park, transition or as it stays now?
No, as, as transition, yeah, because as R30, it would just be a rear lot.
So the transition zone, uh, rear yard is 30 feet?
30 feet.
Yep.
But if it had less residential, it's more.
But again, keep in mind, you know.
There's the special use.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a special permit and application.
Yeah, special permit.
It's gonna have to be a very nice, well-designed project, you guys aren't gonna approve.
I mean, sure, if it was, if those homes, they wouldn't mind if it was closer, but they're staring at storage, you know, self-storage stuff, and, you know, just thinking of the families that live on that lane.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the, the lights and the lighting and all that stuff.
Yeah, because, I mean, there is a bit of an elevation change there, but, uh, the tree belt there is, is definitely, let's put it that way. The ones to the, to the west, it's very substantial, you're not really too concerned about the apartments and the condos.
So it looks like you guys did transition zones up in 2020.
Change there too, but, yeah, the houses to the south, gotta be a major consideration. One thing we have is a lot of tops, that's tall, it tells some serious burning here.
Might just, I could just interject, um, just a little history as to the parcel. So, way back in 2005, um, the then owners over, um, they were looking to come in, and at that time, we didn't have Commerce Park, but they were coming in looking for similar use to what is over on International Rally Court.
Yeah, I did the plans for that.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, it was not well-received by the commission, it was not well-received by the town, it was not well-received by, by the people. Uh, in 2020, um, the commission came in, uh, their own application, what we were looking to do at that time, there were a couple of parcels that we were looking to zone Commerce Park Transitional, having created this Commerce Park Transitional from our Commerce Park A, from the A. Um, and one of the sites that we wanted to, uh, to rezone Commerce Park Transitional was in fact this piece, because it met the criteria of being adjacent to an commercial industrial property in Windsor, that's, you know, otherwise it would be spot zoning if that property next to it, to the, to the east of it, were in fact residential, you know, out of the question. Um, and that was not well-received by the public, to say the least. And so the commission, you know, infinite wisdom, decided to back off and, and not include this lot 44, is what we refer to it as. Um, and, um, so I just throw that out there, this is, you know, and granted, it's 40 years later, and, you know, we've got different situations perhaps, but, um, I would just say that it wasn't popular in '05, and wasn't popular in 2020, so just.
Board again, I think, like my Griffin properties, we're just gonna do something with that property.
Yeah, well, that was, um.
It was 20 or 20, yeah, it was later, this was the third time.
Yeah, it would be the third time.
Yeah, this would be, this would be important though, that. Yeah, because, I mean, basically, Indus is Griffin, which was called, it's, it's been carrying on, yeah. Um, but that's where we are, you know, it's, I realize it's a tough piece, it's a kind of a strange piece, or why is it here, why is it on R30? It is, whatever, whatever reason it is, it is, it's here, that's all. Question is, where does it go from here? I think, you know, the Transition Park Zone is a great opportunity, if there was gonna be a zone change, um, and mainly because it had mixed-use capabilities there, if they were to come in with something that maybe isn't listed on, specifically on the list, we could look at a text amendment again, you folks are always still looking at that being created in that department, but there's, right now, the mix of uses that you can put on this property is quite extensive, just the way it is right now. Um, so, uh, but, you know, and I, I fully understand the concern that, you know, could a major warehouse go in, in the transition zone if you guys were to approve a special permit for that? The answer's yeah. There's, there's less and less of a risk of that, the way the market is evolving, but, you know, we're here to talk frankly, formally, this is what it is. Yeah, it's historically not gone well.
I think somebody was looking at, at the previous, like a hydrophonic farm or?
Yeah, we, we did, we did a lot of planning for that, it was very disappointing when they went elsewhere.
Yeah.
I thought that was fantastic.
As low level, it was a hot, you know.
It was just a cool thing, you know.
Growing vegetables inside and.
But they were, it was a very competitive situation, they were looking at, I'll say dozens of sites I looked at.
So they did, they did actually do it.
I think they went to Rhode Island. They were looking for a sou- kind of a southern New England kind of thing to start with, you know, and then see how that panned out and maybe find some new places, you know.
But that doesn't put them pretty much between Boston and New York.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know, we kind of maybe had some kind of nice tax incentives or something, I'm not sure. I thought this was a great location right near the airport and everything, for that kind of use, and, you know, ideally, that was, that was a great use. At least with the farming history on the parcel.
Yeah, the building was pretty cool too.
It was just, it was, I was, you know, it was a nice private warehouse, went elsewhere.
Well, I, I think it's gonna be a little bit of a, of a, um, something, that it's a little bit of a.
Yeah, I mean, not, not that, um, you know, you're locked in, I mean, it's always nice when you have to do sort of without all the controversial zone change, if you have a project to it.
Yes.
Even though that doesn't necessarily mean that you're locked in for that project, but, you know, if you're talking with a serious player who has, you know, and it's a different situation.
Yeah.
The problem is, it's the cart before the horse, because, you know, if you're out there in the market trying to attract a, a big player, um, their first reaction is, well, you know, what is the zone? Is it zoned for that? And you say, well, no, and, well, how difficult is it gonna be to zone it? And you say, well, it could be really difficult, you know, so it's like, well, we'll see you next time. You're not gonna get anybody to commit those kind of dollars in time, uh, in that situation. So it's a, it, it would be an application for a zone change on its own there.
Outside the residential zoning for that site, what else could have gone there? A church or?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a big parcel, you know, and it has no wetlands, and it's not really a major challenge to develop, you know, so, uh, it's, it's, if, without a mixed use, it would have to be a sizable project, you know, it would have to cost the 36 acres of land. But again, the, the drawbacks are, there is going to be, you know, paramount of, uh, buffering's gonna be required, I mean, you're gonna be, again, within the special permit purview, and there's a large expense involved with bringing the utilities down, so it's gotta be a sizable project.
There has a large truck, so you've got the, they can't take a left turn out of there, this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I just don't see, you know, knowing what I know, what's going on in the market, what we're seeing is, again, I cannot stand here and, stand here and say it could not happen, but this is, this is the bridge too far for that kind of stuff, there's too many other opportunities, uh, include potentially other places in this town to put in a, a large distribution. Why you would pick this one? It's a, it's, I call it, I always fall back to the old bridge too far kind of thing. Especially when, when there's a perfectly big building on the same developer right next door, you can have it, you could spend construction tomorrow, it has every permit, and it's been there. Actually, that site is, that, that's a 17-job number for us, so, uh, that thing's been working around for seven, seven years. Uh, I'm a gentleman on that side, Mr. Zentler. Can you put that point up? I haven't.
Um, yeah.
That it matters that much, but just give me an idea.
All right, we'll do that really quick, because we still got a bunch of things.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna take. Yeah, so then, this is, it's cockeyed from where we are, but I mean, you can see where the circle is, where the, where the mini roundabout is up there at the top of the cage. This is everything that's, you know, east of that site, that's the size of the building, and the truck park is approved, it's very construction. And our site, the site we're talking about tonight is, is just off the top of this cage, it abuts the string.
Also, part of it does go up, yeah, picks up that field.
Yes.
I'll be right at the roundabout there.
So that's, you know, like I said, that's been sitting there for a long time. If you're looking for that box, you could have that tomorrow. It's first nail on the tongue. Well, I'll bring this message back, we'll make it to say, we'll talk to staff. Uh, if we do come in, it'll be a very straight zone change application on its own merits. So talk about it back. All right, thank you.
Uh, next we had, um, twenty-four eleven, uh, we see the application for text amendment. For the, uh, truck park and self.
So this is just for receipt and scheduling of the public hearing for a meeting for October eighth. Um, this is the culmination of your informal you had with the company back in July, I believe.
Z parking.
It's the Z parking, um, even though I don't wanna just use Z parking as a parcel, because it is for, um, the business zone, so it affects any parcels that are in the business zone as a whole, you would be, would be adding those uses.
Adding those uses to it.
But this is just for acceptance, and then our next meeting is October eighth, so I recommend scheduling the public hearing for October eighth.
Uh, the next one is twenty-four twelve, which is a receipt application for text amendment, noise regulation section.
Yeah, so this actually had fallen off my radar, we had talked about this, um,
Thank you.
as part of a settlement agreement, not that it was pertinent to settlement agreement, but it was information that was given to us by our town attorney at the time. Um, there is an appellate court case, which, um, signifies that eight dash two, which is our zoning enabling statute, does not actually allow zoning regulations to regulate noise. Um, our regulations do have a dedicated section, um, for noise control. As such, we have to remove it, it's not enforceable, it's basically invalidated by that appellate court case. Um, so this is just that official removal of that section in accordance with the statute. So this would also be public hearing for October eighth.
Robin, can you send us the, uh, town ordinance?
We don't have a town ordinance, we just have the regulations.
Right. In reading, you know, in reading it, it, as we're reading something, you're like, right? Saying that, uh, noise can only be controlled by ordinance.
Correct.
And the town doesn't have an ordinance.
Correct.
And I know that, you know, I can certainly, I read the case, so I'm a fan of, yeah, our regulations, unfortunately.
Right.
But I'd rather at least have something out there that says what we like, than to disregard and, and remove the regulations and have nothing that says what the town of East Granby has or feels about noise and the control of it, so.
I think.
I don't know if that's, I believe that's something the selectmen, uh, board of selectmen would have to put forth, I know it would have to go to a public hearing, I know it would then have probably go to town meeting.
Yes.
The ratification.
Yes.
I, I just personally would be uncomfortable to ditch this without having, and.
But we don't have a choice but to ditch this.
Well, here's the thing, it can, it can live.
Stay there, it's been there.
It's unenforceable.
But it's unenforceable.
Which.
But it says to developers, and it says to people, this is how the town of East Granby feels, and this is what we'd like to do.
But without it, right. If it's not enforceable, it lends the public to believe that you have a regulation, that they can then make a complaint to our office, and we have the ability to do something with it. We can't.
No, I understand.
And so it's very uncomfortable to have something in your regulations, to have somebody from the public think that there's a mechanism available to them, when in fact there's not a mechanism available to them. So my recommendation would be to take what we have in the regulations and give it to the board of selectmen and say,
Make an ordinance.
make an ordinance out of it, and do it officially that way.
I agree a hundred percent, and I think those things should, you know, concurrently.
We don't have a mechanism here to trigger that at all.
No, we would just refer it.
Refer it, yeah.
But I wouldn't, whether you take it out of the regs or not, that ordinance is not guaranteed to pass through town meeting process, so.
And that's what I'm saying, so let's, let's, let's do it.
But the regulation is.
What will have place, that's fine, that's.
It's, I don't, I disagree, I do not like having regulations that are not enforceable just sitting in there. I don't like that perception for the public.
It seems like kind of a.
And the appellate court's decision was dated when?
It was, it's in here, it's in my memorandum. It was from, hold on, uh, no, hold on, let me go to the email. I think it's two thousand and two. Two thousand and two.
So it's been enforceable for the last two plus years, so.
But you didn't know that.
Twenty-two.
But you, but here's the problem, your previous planner was enforcing a regulation that shouldn't have been being enforced because members of the public were complaining, and they did not know that it was not enforceable.
All I'm saying.
We know it's not enforceable.
All I'm saying, Robin, is that it would behooves the town and the community to have or select.
I'm totally on board with that. I'm not on board with keeping a regulation in place.
You're in touch with Attorney Lipton Feld, who we've mentioned.
Yeah, we can start that process.
Sounds beautiful.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so it's not, it's not valid because it wasn't reviewed by DEEP? Is that what you?
No, so there's a nuance between, and I know a lot of people use the terms interchangeably, but an ordinance is not the same as a regulation.
Right.
And so the zoning enabling statute lays out specifically what zoning regulations can control and regulate. Noise is not one of those things. So there is a statute that says noise can be regulated by a municipality by ordinance, and then that ordinance does have to be reviewed by DEEP before it's approvable, so there is a process in place for that, but it has to be by ordinance.
I was also, um, I went to the DEEP website, and effective of July first, twenty twenty-two, uh, municipalities are no longer required to have their ordinances, ordinances reviewed and approved by DEEP.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, it just has to, it just has to follow along their, their lines of, uh, of noise control ordinance. Yeah, it says that, um, "Any such municipal noise control ordinance shall be at least as stringent as any state noise control plan." And this all can be, I have the website, if anybody's interested in.
Yeah, I have all the information saved, so that if the town wishes to move forward with the ordinance, they have the the pertinent information to do so. I don't even know that our regulation matches what the state has for their, their ordinance information, so we'll compare that before it goes to the board of selectmen and is proposed as an ordinance, but there is a process that has to be followed for that.
Right.
But that's outside of our regulation, so the regulation is something different.
Um, but that still has to go through, uh, public hearing.
Yep, that will be set for October eighth.
Even to remove it.
Yep.
We have to go through public hearing.
Yes.
So between now and then, present something to the selectmen.
Yep.
Um, have a better feel for.
What they wanna do, yeah. Yep.
Anything else on that? So the next thing coming down is an important presentation by Matt Builders to discuss some private roads and proposed regulation change. Where's the road going this time?
Oh, right. Stay right where it is. If I'd known, I could've give you a PDF ahead of time, but I was unaware of that, so I got the old school.
That's okay.
So can I just pull this up here soon? That's what the role is all about.
Okay, so, um, I'm Kirk McNaughton. Been an East Granby resident for a long time, forty years. I'm a builder, um, real estate developer a bit, um, and I own this property over on the western side of town. Maybe you're familiar with it, it's a, it's a neighborhood called Rolling Green, off of Peterson Road and Granby. We got this approved as a, uh, six-lot subdivision, oh, several years ago, in the teens, I forget exactly what year it was. Uh, two of those lots got access off of, of Peterson Road and Granby, and then four lots were accessed off of Rolling Green. And, uh, at the time, this was approved, uh, it was approved as four lots on a shared driveway. And this is all. Here, this is, this is the existing one in Green. This is the shared driveway right now, um, the three, the lots that show here in white, lot number one, number two, and number three, these all have houses on them that I built. And, uh, I still own lot number four, uh, which consists of everything that's in the tan here, that's all twenty-one and a half acres there, and it was always sufficient land and the intention to further develop this, uh, this property. So, at the time that we put the shared driveway in, because we were anticipating developing it further, um, the distinction, I guess, at the time is that, um, four lots can share a driveway. If you go to a fifth lot or a sixth lot or beyond that, it has to be a private road. So, we got this approved as a shared driveway, now we're going to come back and ask the commission to, uh, allow us to create a private road instead of a shared driveway. When you put this in, all the construction that we did was done to the standard required for a private road, so, for example, we created a fifty-foot wide, uh, right away. We, uh, put in the base for paving, uh, was inspected by the town engineer, I forget exactly what the depth is, I think it's about two feet of stone we have there to accept uh, permanent paving. I think it's like twenty-four feet wide to accept a twenty-two foot, uh, pavement. And, like I said, it was always kind of intended to be turned into a private road at some point in the future. So, as we're getting ready to move to develop this property and add some additional lots, um, they then met with Robin, showed her this plan, a plan very similar to it, with a cul-de-sac here, this, as you see, this is approved as a, as a private road, excuse me, as a shared driveway, had a hammerhead turn around at the end. All these improvements are in, I mean, these three houses are here, this, this is in with the hammerhead and everything. Um, I showed Robin a plan with a cul-de-sac here at the end, and, you know, that initial meeting, you know, Robin said, yeah, that looks good, that could probably work as a, as a private road, she did say it would meet the requirements of a private road. So, um.
I just wanna back up Kirk, I didn't say that, as a matter of fact, I sent you an email with about fifteen issues with what you showed me that didn't meet the subdivision requirement, so just for clarity, I did not say that.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm talking, I agree with you.
Okay.
But what I.
That's not what you said, though, so I just wanna make sure we're clear.
I was gonna say some words.
Okay.
But that's why you, you come up, but I, I totally agree with what you're saying. Um, but in my, in our very first meeting, we had kind of a preliminary meeting in your office, and said, hey, can we do this? You looked at it, said, yes, this could meet the private, private road requirement, but you're a hundred percent right.
You touched on the fifteen things that needed, not.
No.
Yep.
No, we're not gonna do that.
Okay.
No.
No, so, I mean, so I, I can, I agree with Robin, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth or anything, because I was gonna say one.
Making sure.
Which was, so then I went to my engineer and said, hey, can you prepare a subdivision plan based on this preliminary conversation that we had with Robin? He prepared, uh, he, my engineer prepared a subdivision plan. But again, we sat down with Robin, and then, yes, you came up with, I don't think it was like fifteen.
It was, I looked at the email today.
Oh, really? Oh, I'll go back and look at that, I haven't reviewed that.
Mm-hmm.
So, but one of them was right, one of them was kind of a real deal, a deal killer, at least a, an issue that really needed to be addressed, and it was determined that, uh, or found really, not determined, that on one of these, on one of these houses, this one here, lot number two, um, one of the requirements of zoning is that, uh, a house has to have a fifty-foot setback off of the right away. And that regulation didn't really apply to the shared driveway, but it does apply to the private road. So, what, what we have is a situation where.
Was the house in before the private road?
No.
It's not a private road, that's the driveway.
I mean, the house in before the driveway.
It was all part of the same.
It wouldn't matter, the setback doesn't apply because it's a driveway.
Right, that's not my fault.
It's all.
Planning on your part.
Yes, agree. Agree. We're planning on my part, so, um, so what happens is this house, here on lot number two, they have a three-car garage, it kind of shuts out to the front towards the road, and the distance off the road is forty-two feet, so there's a little area right here of this, like about the size of this, eight feet here, which creates this non-conformity for us to do a private road. So, I, I thought, so, well, maybe we could, what we could do is, um, get a variance from the ZBA, and Robin, again, sent me straight that that would comply with the regulations or requirements of the ZBA, I couldn't really seek a variance for that. So, um, that led me to kind of go back to the drawing board a little bit, how am I gonna do this? We've got twenty-acre parcel, like to do three additional building lots here, um, what are we doing to do that? And I came to review the subdivision regulations, and I came upon Regulation one point oh eight, which is entitled, "The Variation of Standards." And what that regulation does is allows the commission to waive any requirement of the subdivision, uh, regulations by a three-quarter vote of the members. So, um, you know, I.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that's in the case of a financial hardship, am I wrong?
No, so you guys do have, um, some specificity to that regulation?
You're pulling the property out, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, really quick, it can't have an adverse effect on adjacent property. The granting promotes the town's goals of protecting natural areas and wildlife areas, and all of the other conditions that need to be met is, the waiver was specifically requested by the applicant, "Conditions exist which adversely affect the subject property and are not generally applicable to other property in the area. In the absence of a waiver, one or more required, one or more requirements of this regulation cannot be satisfied, and the requested waiver is minimum deviation necessary from these regulations to permit the development of the subject property."
So, so I was gonna kind of go back through what Robin just wrote quickly, and kind of address it on a, on a step-by-step basis, but I wanted, before I did that, I wanted to kind of explain what I, what I would, I'm trying to accomplish, you're at least proposing as a waiver, so, um, the right away here is fifty feet wide. Um, the requirement of a right away for the subdivision regulations is fifty feet wide. What I'm proposing is, we're going to take eight feet at the most, but a, kind of like it's on an arc, that we would take eight feet from the right away and convey it to the owner of lot number two. the owner of lot number two in order to create or to provide that 50-foot setback that's required under zoning. So what we'd have, what we'd have would be this. What we'd have would be this, and I don't know if you can see it here, I can kind of mark it up a little bit for you, but, um, as a road comes in here, I've got a dotted line that shows the old right of way, which is a straight, straight line like this. And we're going to convey this property here. It consists of about 1,400 square feet in total. Going to convey this to the owner here so that he now has his full 50 feet. Here's his garage. Here is that area where the, um, the variance is needed or the waiver is needed. So we're going to convey this much, and then what happens is, instead of like this doesn't affect the, all the improvements under place, they don't get touched. The roadway is there, it's already built. It's already, like I said, two feet deep, 24 feet wide, um, ready to become a private road, because the private won't ask me the town road standards, but it's ready to become a private road without any change. And what I'm asking is, would the commission be open to, um, considering a waiver? In the right of way being 42 feet at its narrowest point as opposed to, um, the 50 feet per the regulation? So that's why I'm here on an informal basis, just to see if this is something that, you know, the commission would, would consider.
Do you add eight feet to the other side of the right of way, or is that going to oppose the other property?
Well, I have to take it from the other property owner.
Is there, it's not built, no, we had?
It's already, it's already owned by another, another party.
Oh.
So it's not, that's not our.
You have to go through that.
There's actually no language that, um, there's distance language, but there is no language that says it can't be built off another private road. Yeah.
What was the private drive? Sorry.
So the, this would be a permanent.
Trying to remember the last time you came forth and we approved the private drive off the private road, so I'm just getting some clarification.
Uh, so the length from where it hits to the cul-de-sac cannot be more than 1,200 feet in length.
Right.
Which was one of my comments from that email.
This would be 1,400 feet.
Which my comment in the email too with the multiple things was that it did not meet that regulation.
But that could be waived, that's commonly waived by the.
But the commission doesn't have to waive it.
Don't have to waive it.
I'm just saying it doesn't meet, does not meet the regs, so it is too long.
What are the other waivers that would get committed?
Well, I think that, I think that's the only one, really. I guess I should have.
If it's not, if subdivision isn't done on conception and primary approvals, the only way to do it down the road is under course of financial hardship.
No, so, no, we don't have anything like that in for, for zoning or subdivision. So this would be a re-subdivision if the commission were to entertain it, um, because it's changing the, the lots from the original subdivision. So it'd be a re-subdivision, it'd be a private road. Your regulations let them ask for waivers for pretty much any section, which by the way is not common. Um, usually it's very specific to specific things, something we can look at in the future. Um, and so any section of your regs is in theory waivable by you. He can't waive the 50-foot front yard setback because it's a zoning regulation, and zoning regulations are not waivable. And if you want to get a variance for a zoning regulation, you have to show a hardship which cannot be financial and must be unique to the property that it's on, that you can't do something on your property that you want to do that's different from any other similarly situated property. So, which is why I told him no for the variance, because it's a purely financial aspect to this. Um, it benefits him to re-subdivide and have four additional or three additional lots to build on, so.
Is it, I'm sorry, is it three or four or two?
Three, three additional.
Three additional.
Which are the.
The, the color, the, yeah, the tan.
Okay, so this is, this is the original lot four, this white here, and so this would be lots of, it's called lot number five, six, and seven, five, six, and seven.
Right.
If being a private road, would that meet some bounds and everything? How in the control being it's everything?
Well, this is a very detailed, uh, declaration, uh, shared, shared driveway or private road.
Still have to have boundaries.
Access declaration. Yeah, it's all, it's all, uh, documented.
Should I say, you know, 50-foot highways are pretty common for a curbside road? You know, but, you know, this is really just a private road, so. I'm not sure by shrinking it to 42, what's it, the harm in?
You just move that garage eight feet.
Well, it's an attached garage, you know, it's a part of, it's a fun part of a three car. Yeah, oh, you could do that. I'll bet my, I'll bet my homeowner would be very, very happy, but he's got a pretty nice house.
Chop off on the garage.
I would give it down there, see his own houses, they're, they're pretty nice, so. I, I do, a lot of people would like to move to East Granby, yeah, I think. We had these, we got three more nice homes and nice homeowners, uh, pretty quick.
You say like 1,400 square feet will take up?
Oh, yeah, yeah. 1,400 square feet is the area, yeah.
I don't see a problem with. But could that be turned into a public road then, or no?
No, no, it's a 12-foot private road.
It is, so.
A private road.
Oh.
So the, this regulation, 1.08, says the commission may waive any requirement of these regulations by a three-quarter vote of all the members of the commission. Okay, so I guess, I just have a quick question. How many, how many members are there in the commission?
Six.
Six, so, um, we'd be five out of six, right? Because four out of six would be two-thirds, so five out of six. Um, it says, "The granting of a waiver shall not have a significant adverse effect on adjacent property or on public health, safety, or welfare." And I think we're in the clear on that because nothing really is going to change. I mean, one property owner will get more property, but the road is going to really kind of stay the same as it was anyway, as a shared driveway or a private road. There's really no, no change, no adverse effect. Number two talks about granting of a waiver will promote the town's goal of protecting natural areas and wildlife, including the Metacoma Trail. Well, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really do anything there, but it's really just these existing condition is still the same as it is, so I don't have to go against that, but that's what it says in there. And then all the conditions have been satisfied, waiver's been requested, so when we come in for a sub, re-subdivision application, we'd have to specifically ask for the waiver. The waiver would be for in the subdivision regulations, Section 3, which is the design standards, 3.06 is the street layout, 3.06.3D blocks about, um, no open streets, you'll have a way of less than 50 feet. So that's what the regulation is, but you can waive that at your discretion. Um, conditions exist which adversely affect the subject property and are not generally applicable to other property in the area. Well, we, we hit that right in the nail, because there's really nobody else who would have this situation, you know, in terms of having this existing house. Um, with eight feet going over the, the building line, which would be a very, it's a very unusual circumstance, that's mainly, I'll point out. Um, in the absence of that waiver, in the absence of the waiver, one or more requirements and specifications cannot be satisfied. That would be true. And the requested waiver is the minimum deviation necessary from the regulation to permit the development of the property. That would be true. So maybe another waiver also with regard to length, but again, we're not making any longer than it already is, because the private, the shared driveway is coming right here right now anyway. So we're not really extending it, it's already been approved to the 1,400 feet like that it is now, so. So that's our, um, and then it says, "In granting of a waiver, the commission shall state on record its reason for which the waiver was granted." So that's kind of like what we're here for, I guess, is to see if there'd be an appetite for us to bring an application in to waive that 50-foot for that very small 1,400 square foot area.
It always seems to be something. I, 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 what I don't think you're going to get tonight is, is a head count of who's going to vote how.
Sure, I understand.
So, I mean, I, I can't speak to it. But just keep an eye on it. Uh, then application, and those are the conditions of the application. So that's up to you.
Okay, well, Kirk, I mean, I don't know why people say, oh, it's crazy, I don't know, it's all, yeah, I understand it, but it's not.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's really ancient, it's a jacket, but.
Kirk, I, I would suggest to open your email from what she suggested to you, and I would just recommend discussing a little bit further with her before you go to the effort of retaining counsel or having our friends at Alfred draw up some sort of, uh, re-subdivision solution.
Skip actually drew up the one that came up at all the comments that was previously sent, so.
Right.
Um, I would work off those comments and make sure that you be out any waivers that you'd be requesting, that they've been thoroughly looked at through the regulations, because the plans that you guys had, you actually had submitted as an application and withdrew it based on my feedback, so.
Yeah.
Highly suggest that they do a better job of going through the regulations and addressing those issues.
I'm glad you reminded me of that, you know, so.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, okay, one last item that we had is to, um, appoint a member to go in for, uh, to take, uh, Dan's place.
Next thing.
A letter from the RTC suggesting Todd's decision, uh, moving him from alternate to, uh, permanent position. And, uh, I'm on board with that decision.
Make a motion. You need to make a motion.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, yeah, I was, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, have Todd be the new commission member to take, uh, Dan's spot.
And when's, when's Dan's, um? Right, well, we'll go with the mess.
It would go with the, yeah, with that election.
A second motion.
Do you have any discussion, any other suggestions? Uh, all those in favor?
I just, I comment, I know that, that Todd had, you know, with the birth of, of baby, I'll assume that the baby now.
Ah, baby's sleeping.
Sleeping, sleeping more.
It's crazy to get out of. That's what we're doing now.
Todd, my wife's watching, don't, don't.
Don't ruin it.
Good one, takes care of it.
How old, how old are we?
Uh, six and a half months, yeah. So just starting to sleep, you know, January was a different circumstance for the imminent arrival of him, but now that he's here and used to fatherhood and.
Yeah.
Even more, circumstances have changed.
Sounds, sounds good.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Those.
I'm going to abstain on this one. Six votes out.
I make a motion for a German.
Uh, second, are all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, ciao.